Would you call this meeting to order? If you please, and join me, Stan, for your pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Boyer notification and posted. We have minutes to approve. We haven't met in a while. Are these minutes going back to November? Any comments, corrections, additions, deletions? If not, without objection, the minutes are approved. We're on to the agenda. Anybody would like to add or amend in any way the agenda?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. If not, the agenda is approved. We're in the citizen comments portion. I want to say a couple of things before we do that. If you want to speak, please submit your request to speak to the Community Development Assistant. I think that's going to be Kristen, okay, over there. So if you want to fill out a little form with your information on it so we can call upon you when we have the time allowed. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak. The commissioners will respectfully listen to your comments. At the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the public record. In turn, please be respectful to the public forum that you are in. This public meeting is recorded and therefore becomes a matter of public record, as does all correspondence on this issue directed to county officials. Please place your cell phones on silent mode. I heard one or two already. If you need to speak with the caller, please step outside the room. As a reminder, the Planning Commission is an advisory body to county council. As such, the Planning Commission recommendation on this issue, or any issue, goes forward to county council through the Community Service and Land Use Committee, then to county council for their review and voting. So the PC recommendation, Planning Commission recommendation, is a step in the review process and voting determination by county council.
Chairman, can I, apologies, can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
We're having trouble hearing you. Is your mic on?
It's, the light's on. Maybe it's not close enough.
Yes, thank you.
All right, how's that?
Oh, good.
Okay, did you miss anything? Want to hear it again? No, I guess not. All right, this is the portion of the agenda where we allow citizens to speak on non-agenda items. So if you have anything specific that you'd like to talk about that's not on our agenda, this would be a time to do that. Do we have any non-agenda speakers? No, okay. Moving on to our action items. First, and the first action item we're going to hear on is a zoning map amendment, rezoning request for 86.16 acres located at 98 Jennings Road from T2R rural to C3 neighborhood mixed Would the county planning department like to start?
Good afternoon. So what is before y'all is rezoning for 98 Jennings Road. This is a little over 86 acres that is currently zoned T2R, which allows one dwelling per three acres. So that would permit approximately 28 homes currently. The proposed zoning district is C3 neighborhood mixed use. This request came in to accommodate 184 single-family detached homes. Currently, in the comprehensive plan, the, it is identified for future land use as a hamlet place type, and this should be used when the property is upzoned. And you can see is what we have gotten today that that is not the route that they have planned to go with this. Also, if you look around, could you scroll back up to that one? Further south of the property is a lot of C3 land that is already there, that is not, that is rural area, that is not being used currently. So regarding that, staff recommends denial of this rezoning because of that. There's any other questions? The air station has been notified, and they reached out. I did get that, Chairman. And essentially, I will share that, but they stated that they are not in favor of this rezoning as well. And the school district has not commented, but they have been notified.
Comments?
Is there a letter from, from the air station folks?
I got, I got an email, but I can give that out. But I got it like while we were, like after hours, while we were just over.
As long as it's for the public record, yeah.
Yeah, I have that.
And school district Battery Creek High, vis a vis Battery Creek High on Jennings Road, no comment yet?
They were notified, and I got an email that they received that, but they never gave us any documentation regarding any comments.
Okay.
Kristen, would you mind at least just touching on the issue of the place base component of the comp plan?
So this, right now, in the comp plan, that area has the future land use designation as the hamlet place type. I can go a little further in that and read what it says in our comp plan. It's typically a larger and more intense in rural crossroads, but it often has small pedestrian-oriented main street, main street with surrounding and some porting residential that is scaled to the size of pedestrian shed. A historic example of a hamlet includes the original settlement of Bluffton along Calhoun Street. Give you an example of that.
Thank you.
It's a little, yeah, it's a little bit more, let's see. Yeah, it's a little bit more intense than a rural crossroads, but not by too much.
Kristen, let me, let me add to that question. What would be required by the applicant to submit a hamlet place type overlay? As I recall, the last time we considered when there was a full plan in place submitted to us, that was part of the consideration whether or not it was going to be allowable rezoning.
Yeah, so we would need plans. We'd also need to look at green and open space plans, and also the thoroughfare plans that we also did last time. I think those are the main three ones.
So you remember Cherry?
Cherry Point.
Cherry Point, you know, that came, that is an example of a place type overlay, that type of documentation, a, what we call a regulating plan. It actually becomes a zoning map, but it's using the transit zones for the place type overlay, and then also the layout of streets, which we would call the thoroughfare plan, and then all dedicated open space. And so, you know, we require, it's kind of an extra level. It's almost providing a master plan so that you have more surety of the character and type of development that's occurring on the site.
So if we were looking at something like that, that would have to be presented tonight as part of the applicant process? Have to, is reviewed by, and agreed to by planning?
Well, that's not what was submitted.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand the alternative of have what you've got down here is allowed.
Yes. So it would be, you know, a submittal similar to what you saw at Cherry Point, coming to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
But that's not, you know, what we're reviewing today.
Okay. Can I, while you're up there, can I ask you one other question? The original application that we saw, and I think they had, I don't believe they changed from the one we saw in January, talked about TIA being completed in the first couple of weeks of January, a more extensive TIA that took into a number of different thoroughfares and adjoining roads. Has that been accomplished? To your knowledge, yeah?
Not to my knowledge. Yeah, if you want to speak to that when you present.
Yeah, we can hold on to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just had a quick question, because I'm not sure, I don't have it in front of me, but if this were to be reapplied under a hamlet type overlay, how many dwellings per acre would that be compared to what we, what they're requesting now, which is 184 homes in this 86 acre tract? What would the hamlet type allow?
I mean, it would really come down to what the applicant is proposing.
Okay.
There's a ceiling. I believe it's three dwelling units per acre with a hamlet place type, but it really comes down to what, what the applicant is submitting.
Right, okay, thank you.
So can you restate the reasons for turning it down? I think it said something about the culture and the character of the area, as well as density?
Yeah. Did you want to address that, or do you, I mean, I think it has to do with, you know, when we evaluate the list of criteria we use to evaluate zoning, a lot of them deal with compatibility with the surrounding area, and that's something that we are concerned with, with this site. But the other is that our comprehensive plan points to a specific way of upzoning this property because of where it's located, and that wasn't followed. So for those two reasons, we're recommending denial.
Other questions in the county?
I have a quick question. Rob, tell me, when I read it, so let's call it 86 acres, I sort of forget, and 15 plus are wetlands, right? And I went out to the site, and it's a lumber pine-forested area, correct? So I'm wondering a little bit more about, so 86 minus 15 plus, whatever, so that's where everything is going to be built on. Then I saw in the plans, the, I don't know, swales and, you know, drainage areas. Are you, I guess I'm not confident that there's been enough attention paid to the drainage in, in that area. So I don't, oh, right, yeah. Are you, I mean, has enough work been done, to your satisfaction, the professional satisfaction, about the, you know, drainage ponds and so on, and drainage?
Um, well.
Because they're not big trees, they're pine trees, which is different from like a bunch of live oak trees and a bunch of underbrush, which, you know, vents water from the land, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, typically, unless there's a glaring example, like somebody's rezoning a property and it's more than half-wet, or, you know, we take that into consideration, but that's something that's really looked at when they come in the development phase. So nothing stood out saying that this property just can't be developed.
Right, was boggy or something?
Yeah, I mean, when they come in, you know, if this were approved, and they came in for, you know, to our staff review team, then we would be looking at delineating the wetlands in the property, they have to set aside natural resources, all of that, and then that's going to yield, you know, how they can develop the property. And that's one of the advantages of the place type overlay, is that goes a little more into that, you're beginning to work around the natural features of the site, setting aside open spaces and all that, prior to going through the amendment process.
The reason I was asking is that it's so much more dense than the surrounding area, that I was worried about whether that density and the amount of impervious surface was going to play out into the surrounding properties.
Well, that's certainly, when we look at compatibility, that's something we keep in mind. I mean, we do have a robust stormwater ordinance, and so that would be a requirement, you know, if this were to be approved and move forward, but.
Thanks.
Okay. Further questions?
Yeah, one more. If this would, if they came back with the hamlet type application, that would fit more the compatibility of the surrounding area, in your view?
We would still take that into consideration, but it would definitely, you know, and the other thing about the, the hamlet place type and how they would develop it, you know, there's, there's a lot of different ways that they could, you know, look at the site and ways to minimize impact on the, you know, maybe step down the density as you get closer to the rural areas. So there's, there's a lot of ways that that could be done that may play into that compatibility issue.
Okay.
You know, but that, that was one of several considerations that we looked at and given our recommendation.
Anything else?
Bob, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so the current proposed, if it's passed, means they're able to have 184 dwellings, correct?
Well, ideally, because they, we have something called base site area, so you subtract out if there are wetlands in the property. But yeah, based on the den, the size of the property and what they could have, that's a good estimate.
So my question is, if they were to do the hamlet place type, what would be the projected number of dwellings they would be able to make, or to?
Well, it, it could be a little bit greater, or it could be less, depending on what they submitted.
But that would be negotiation.
Well, that would be something, yeah, as they went through, and that could be a condition attached by the Planning Commission or by council.
Okay, we'll have another chance to crack it later on if you want to talk to the county representatives, but if there aren't any other questions for Rob or Kristen, we'll move on to the applicant representative, I guess Mr. Tiller.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rob Merrick. I'm with Polte Homes. Thank you all for your time tonight. Want to be, let me address just a few things that were brought up in this, I was just spoken to. You know, one of them was, you talked about the comprehensive plan, the future comprehensive plan. If you look at the parcel itself, it does show that it's, it's slated for a neighborhood mixed use C3 zoning. The biggest thing is that hamlet place type overlay. What we are proposing here is, I don't know if you're familiar with Polte Homes, but what we, we have three different flags that we, you have your Polte home, which you've seen probably Salem Bay, Mayland Bluff, and some of those areas. You've probably heard of Sun City, Del Webb, that's one. But then another brand that we offer is our Syntex brand. And a neighborhood that was a staple in the Beaufort community was Shadow Moss. That was a Syntex brand. That brand is geared towards your affordable workforce housing buyer. It's for your police officers, your firefighters, home prices for that, your nurses. It gives for those, those young families that have moved away and want to come back and raise in Beaufort. It opens up that entry level to be able to operate and be able to buy a home in the Beaufort area. One thing that we're seeing in this specific location, as you said, it's 86 acres. If we go this, yes, you can do 180 units. What we're proposing is 149 units on this. If you can pull up, Rob, I believe it's in the traffic, it actually shows the proposal of the plan that we have, which is the layout of a neighborhood. It's a walkability neighborhood that you can have. Large home sites, these home sites are larger than we even had in Shadow Moss. You're talking to 70 by 156 foot home sites. These home sites are standard home sites that you would find in one of those neighborhoods like that. A neighborhood that we build in all the time would be roughly a 52 by 120 foot home site. So we're providing a traditional neighborhood. You take a place type overlay, hamlet location, what you're asking is, you're asking the bus to put a small habber sham location right here, in this, in a main street type area, building townhomes around it, things like this. In this location, the proximity due to the shopping, the schools, the military bases are within five to 10 minutes of it. You know, we're able to access all of that from this location. Talked about the drainage and the fields and the things that are in the, the natural buffers and stuff like that. Well, this area's been timbered many times before, so we're talking a significant amount of pine trees here. But if there were, you know, any large live oaks and things like that, those are things we work around to be able to do. If you notice, and you take in the stormwater and the drainage, as we progress forward with the proposal, and as we go into engineering, all that is taken into consideration. And as we move in that, every bit of that has to run through their stormwater requirements here. So we understand all that. The traffic impact studies that need to be in place, you know, normally, in a situation, we do most, probably four intersections at the most. Sometimes it depends upon the location. In this one, the Beaufort County asked us to do up to, I think it was seven or nine intersections, which is significant, almost double than what we've ever done on any project that we have. But that's something that we're willing to do, to be able to, to provide the, the information that they need to be able to make that best decision. So in this location, we're not looking for, we are looking for something that is a need for this area, and that has been what we have heard. I've sat in multiple workshops of councils, did multiple workshops there. We heard workforce housing, opportunities for entry-level buyers, empty nester retirees that can't afford to go into a Sun City or a Del Webb, but would love to be in the Low Country and have a smaller ranch-style home. That is what we're offering to be able to put in this location. And for that, I mean, I'd be willing to, if you'd like to see it, these are, can I hand these to you?
Sure.
Okay. This is an example of some Syntex homes that would go in this location. No, it's not double front porch homes that you're going to see, neo-traditional style. These are, these are floor plans that are fit for families, growing families, two-part lodges. And there's various options, you know, you'll, and you'll see one neighborhood will have, yes, we'll have maybe five, six different floor plans with different elevations. They'll go from three bedrooms up to five bedrooms, dependent upon the, the home itself. But that's what we're proposing for this location, and we hope that you support us as we go, because we believe this is a need for the area. This is something that we've, we've proven it out with Shadow Moss, and that's been a fantastic neighborhood. Many families call that home, and we'd love to do the same thing in this location as well.
Just to be clear, Syntex, Polte?
Same company.
Is proposing to buy this property from the owner for development? But it doesn't, you don't own it at this point?
We don't own it at this point, no. The family that's owned this property, I believe they've had it for 60, 70 years, something like that.
Okay, in your, in your narrative, that you accompanied with your application, you used the term entry-level housing interchangeable with workforce housing.
Exactly.
And you, you didn't make a commitment to workforce housing, or you just said the likelihood, in quotes, the likelihood of workforce housing. What do you see as the percentage of workforce housing and the prices of these housing, the range? Can you give us a feel for that?
Well, I think you can, yeah, so when you talk about, I guess, each municipality seems to be a little bit different in what they, what they gear. So for us, when we say a TCG4, that's a target group that we'd be looking at. So in this location, we're looking at like a TCG4 and a TCG4.5. What is that? That is a, it's a children's home, mixed family, monthly payment focused. You're looking ranges from 70 to 110% of the median income in the area. So that's going to give you that, a nurse and a police officer, you know, two school teachers, you know, things like that. That, that's the target group that we're looking at moving in this location.
Okay, so the 70 to 110% of the median price range, which I believe is somewhere around close to $70,000? Is that right? So they'd be people who make more than $70,000 a year.
It'd be probably two-income families, so it'd be two teachers.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just trying to get a feel.
Absolutely.
Clients that you're going after. More questions?
I have a question. Maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but I've seen the site, and I really don't think that shopping of, to a large supermarket is within five or 10 minutes. You know, I think it's much more rural than that, and much more undeveloped. So could you tell me what you mean by that? And if you want, if, I mean, I don't see it on the plans. Is there going to be a main street with shopping destinations or a Parker's, you know, gas station on the site?
No, ma'am, if you see it here, I mean, it's 80 acres directly across the street from Battery Creek High School. This location to Walmart at Cross Creek is like 15 minutes. It's, it's not five minutes. From right here, this location to the Walmart, if we probably Googled it, I bet you, you're probably, you're within five to 10 minutes of being at the Walmart shopping center.
If there's not traffic, right? I mean, because you have to go out either onto, you know, Highway 21 or on the other side.
You come out of Ram's Road, you take a left on Broad River, you'll come out to the thing, take a right, and the shopping center's on your right-hand side.
I was just there, so, I mean, I'm just telling you, I was there on a Sunday, and I timed it. I had a stopwatch. So, I mean, I'm just challenging you that it's not five to 10 minutes. And by the way, not all of the families who live there are going to have kids at Battery Creek High School.
Absolutely. And, but what we understand, and I did reach out to the schools, to speak to them, to ask them about the capacity and things like that, and I did not get a response back. But my understanding, after talking with multiple council members, the product, area for growth that they're looking for, and some of the workforce, and the schoolings and the things that can afford the growth, is in the northern Beaufort County area.
You say you talked to council members? Have you talked with the people?
I did.
Have you had discussions with the community?
I sure did. We did two community workshops. So we did, before we did this, we met with Councilman Dawson, did two, two community workshops. And the first workshop that we did, you know, we had approximately about 12 to 15 people in there. I don't know if it was back in October timeframe. We presented the proposal at that point. Councilman Dawson asked if we would come back again, which we came back again. So we came back to that council meeting again. The overall council meeting was good. We did have a couple people that were outspoken. At the end of the meeting, we walked out of there feeling very good with the councilmen and the people that were at the meeting. Later on, we did find out that we had a petition with some of the, the neighborhood folks that were in the Villageville area. So we did, we took that, you know, we got that, we listened to the feedback that they had on there. A lot of the things that we're looking to do in our community are the same thing. Our communities that we're looking at is a walkable community. We want a community that has families, empty nesters. We want a community that the people can stay together and be able to, to enjoy, want a community that they can feel safe in. So all of the same things that we're looking to do and provide in this community is the same thing that they're looking at in their community.
Are you going to address, or is Mr. Tiller going to address the TIA?
The TIA, the traffic study?
The one that was going to be completed in January?
No one ever stated that we would have a traffic study completed in January. Normally, once we get to a, we say what we are willing to do is, you know, whatever the requirements that they're asking us to do as far as a traffic study, as we're pushing through the process, we will complete that traffic study. Any improvements that are required by the DOT that says, you know, whether it's a, a turning lane or any off-site improvements, you know, we have to commit to be able to do those, to be able to move the project forward. So that is something that, that we know through the process that we're going to have to complete. Same as the engineering, once we get down to it, and you know, we get the plan approved and things like that, it'll be through that same process.
Yeah, under the, I guess it was the Beaufort County Engineering, to Kimberly Horn and Associates, there was a explanation of what needed to be done, and it mentioned that traffic counts, traffic counts, not the whole TIA, but traffic counts would be, will be performed during the second or third week of January 2024.
I think that was held off because we were going to get through the first Planning Commission. We wanted to get through the first Planning Commission, and when that got pushed off, that's where it pushed that off. So we can bid the traffic studies and put them in place. I mean, we could definitely get that in line. But as far as the full traffic study, as we're going through the process, and they're pulling those things in, we'll be doing that during the process.
So the, the answer to his original question was, it hasn't been done yet?
It hasn't been done, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for the gentleman? No? Okay. Okay, this is.
Just a quick question for Mr. Merrick. I know right now the plan that's shown is all, it looks like approximately equal lot size, single-family detached. Did you consider more of a range of housing types that's more, I guess, in keeping with what the hamlet place type is looking for?
We looked at it, but the hamlet place type overlay puts a tremendous amount of restrictions on the, the use and the, say, the, the design. of restrictions on the product, the use in the, the lay, or say the, the design of the home itself, detached garages, set certain parameters. Um, you know, so they put a lot more restrictions as far as the design goes, which then increase the, the, the price point of the house dramatically. So in this scenario, we'd keep this, the, the home sites the same size, but we're able to break up the variation in providing from two-story to ranch style homes with a blend of different style homes going from fifteen hundred square feet to three thousand square feet, so we can hit those different types of, of buyers and what they might need at that time.
Thank you.
Any further questions this time? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Tiller, did you want to say anything?
I think we're good unless you've got questions for me.
Oh, okay, uh, we're at the, any questions for Mr. Tiller? Okay, we're at the point where citizen input will be allowed. I have, um, two people who indicated they would like to speak. There's, there's more than that in the room. If you, any of you would like to speak, yeah, feel, please feel free to do it. Come up and put your name and address with the administrative, uh, support organization over here. No? Okay, so we'll move forward with the two that indicated they'd like to speak with us. Joyce Hamm, is it?
That would be me. As a matter of fact, um, I was at one of the meeting that Mr. Roberts was at, and he spoke about these homes. Um, you know, you guys are supposed to be here for us, the government, you know? You're supposed to represent the people and to protect us from large, big corporations that would come in and try to take advantage of the small people. This small, walkable community that Mr. Robert is talking about, these houses are going to cost seventy-seven thousand dollars because he said at the other meeting that these houses cost about three hundred thousand dollars. Okay? Now, I'm a military family too. And those military families, you know, those corporals and those sergeants and those private, they're, they're not going to be able to afford the homes he's talking about. Beaufort County right now hires about five hundred and fifty, twenty-seven people. And of those five hundred and twenty-seven people, the minimum salary for about five hundred and fourteen people makes under seventy-seven thousand dollars. Beaufort County can't even afford to pay a sufficient amount of people in this community to be able to purchase one of those homes. So if Beaufort County cannot provide finances for the people that already live here, who they want to buy these homes? The people that don't live here? We're voting for y'all. And y'all supposed to be protecting us from people who want to come in, push up our taxes, and run us out of our community. We're not looking to be another Hilton Head. We've been here for a long time. Matter of fact, my family, if you look at the census in seventeen ninety, you'll see Sarah Gibbs on that, on that census. That's me. That's my grandmother. We've been here a long time. And we don't want to be pushed out by big corporations because they want to use the resources that we have. You understand? And it's not just that. They're billing other things around it. He talked about Shadow Moss. He, you know, you, you drive down the street, you see all these stores coming, you know, in the area, and when you look at, you know, all these things that's growing in the area, we got deers in our yard right now. We ca, they don't have no place to go. We, we didn't want the deers to live in our yard, in our front yard. They're not our, they need places to live too. So all we're saying is that for the voting people of this community who are paying taxes and voting for the people in this community is to look out for us. We're not making that seventy-seven thousand dollars he's talking about. The people in that community is making less than forty thousand dollars. And Beaufort County too. Beaufort County is paying about two hundred and seventy people less than forty thousand dollars that he's talking about. I'm trying to figure out who he want to come here. Because we can't afford it. You see what I'm saying? And, and if Beaufort County is going to push our taxes up, are they going to offer us jobs? How many more people are, what's the impact is it going to be on Beaufort County when Beaufort County need to employ people to be able to afford these houses? That's an impact. You see what I'm saying? And if Beaufort County isn't prepared to hire half of the people that's already in the community now, at least seventy thousand dollars annually, then, then what do we need houses that cost, uh, seventy-seven thousand, seventy, I mean, three hundred thousand dollars for? What do we need that for? We need more affordable housing. Bring it down. Because we are making under forty thousand dollars in that area. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Jesse White?
Thank you, Jesse White, the Coastal Conservation League. I concur with everything Joyce said, um, and just wanted to highlight a couple additional things for your consideration. First, we, we fully support the staff's recommendation for denial, and we hope that you will indeed deny this application. There's a clear process in the comprehensive, in the comprehensive plan and in, um, the process for an upzoning, and that is not followed here. The cumulative impacts that this region in northern Beaufort County in particular, but also zooming in further into the kind of greater Burton area, is facing currently, but going to be facing because of how much development has already been approved, I'm talking thousands of units that have not been built out yet, and this is adding on to that. You see the construction of the gray tract going up along, um, the highway when you pass, um, Walmart. There is a fi, five hundred unit, um, multifamily development immediately to the south of this that has not been built. The site has not even been touched. None of this is being considered, um, and that is part of why, fortunately, the, the Southern Low Country Regional Board has recommended that all the planning bodies come together and do a growth analysis to kind of take stock of where we are. You were just in the green space workshop, talking about this provision for existing pre, already approved PUDs to be able to buy down the density, because we learn, we learn better in the future when we lock ourselves into something that, um, may not have all of the protections in place for the existing communities and what the reality of that development is going to look and feel like, we end up with regrets. And so I think in this instance, we're already seeing insufficient infrastructure in this region. I've heard anecdotally that there's capacity issues with Beaufort Jasper in the Salem Bay area, um, with the new apart, apartment complex over there, them not being able to actually provide the capacity that they said that they could. That's anecdotal, but this is, you know, looking at what's on the screen here, this is not a traditional community. This is not a, uh, an example of, of Haber Sham. This is a track home, clear cut, squeeze as many houses in as you can model that we've seen time and again. And as Joyce was saying, um, these, the prices could be lower, the, the design could be so much better, and that's what our plan recommends, and that's what we should follow. Because we have to demand better in order to get better, and these large companies can do better if we ask them to. And so I would, I definitely think it's very concerning that there hasn't been a traffic count at all, um, given the extent of the development that's already going underway with the Beaufort Plaza Shopping Center and that gray tract. But just in, in general, closing remarks, the cumulative impacts of this development are significant. We have to slow down. We've already approved so many units in this very rural area, and we have to protect our existing communities and the character of our places, or we're going to lose them forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, I have one further name that just came, came up, Julia Blake.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Julia Blake, and I heard, um, the gentleman, and he was saying about Jensen Road. Well, we live not too far from there, and he said he notified some of the people. Well, this is my first day knowing about it, and I think that many people, if they had known, they would, they would, it would have been full. Because he doing something like he did in, they did in Seabrook behind my parents' house. And when they came and they told us, along with Gerald Dawson, Mr. Dawson, they said they was going to zone in and YMCA was going to be out there, they're going to have a little marketing place, and they're going to put homes out there. Well, they put mobile homes. They got two mobile homes out there. That's all they have. The homes are so high, if other people wanting to, you know, purchase the home, they had to pay two hundred and fifty or more dollars, thousands of dollars. Number one, we don't have the income in Beaufort for the teachers. I worked, I used to work to Battery Creek, and then the teachers going home with less pay. So how the teachers going to afford a million dollars home when they can't afford the home that they have? They getting kicked out, they own home, what they have now. Our roads, you have to walk on the edge of the road because we don't have a sidewalk. They ain't there helping us. We need help. You getting all these people from north coming down to the south to purchase home, and headed people here, suffering. They are suffering. If you ever go in some of these little areas, people don't have bathroom. I have a young lady have a tree on the top of their house because, and I don't call down for people to help her, and no one came to help. When the tree fall, it not, it just, her whole side, she got it to get stitches, her whole side, she had, I had three surgeries. No one help. Help us first. Please help us first. These people need help. These children need help. Can we consider the little children coming out? Don't have roof over their head. We have people living in the woods, and they don't have no place to lay their head. But we talking about a million dollars home. What about us? Think about us, just like the young lady say we pay tax. But we have a heart. Consider it. Yes, we needed a little growth, but the finance for the people wrong in the area. We need help.
Thank you.
We need help. Can you help us first? Then we can step out. Then we can see a growth, but it's not going to be a growth until you help us. We the one working hard to help. When they zone in, our tax money, our ta, we gonna have to pay more tax. It gonna increase our tax. We can put one home on a property, when these people putting five home, home on one property in Seabrook. We need help. Think about it when you make this decision. Come look at some of these where these people live and try to help them. Then we, all we can help you. And it be a room enough so everybody can have a piece of the pie. But you can't have a piece of the pie if the little, little people don't have no way to lay their head.
Yes, Mrs. Blake, would you address us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, I have no further comments offered, um, to speak. So with that, we'll, unless there's a last minute one, we'll, we'll close the door to public speakers. All right, now it's time we entertain a discussion amongst ourselves before we make any motion and a further determination. Comments? Questions? Anything you'd like to say?
I, I guess I have a comment. So the, fundamentally, the exact, um, proposal has come to us twice with no changes. So is this a point that we should ask, are they looking at Hamlet designation? I hear no. I mean, is that something that should go into our consideration?
No, it's not part of the application process, so we wouldn't be considering that tonight.
Oh, oh, we discussed it, but that's not.
Yeah, we just brought it up because it was mentioned as a possible designation by the county.
Well, and you, you've heard me, I guess, take this position before. I feel that this planning commission is a caretaker of our comprehensive plan, which is a document that was produced through a very broad public process with broad-based engagement. And while the, um, future land use plan wasn't shown in the staff report, if you go to the comprehensive plan and look at it, it does designate this area as a Hamlet-type place-based area to be considered as part of any rezoning proposal. And, um, it, it's hard for me to get past that just because I don't know that, um, if, as a community, we've said that's something that we think is appropriate to be considered in this location, then it's our job as a planning commission to, um, defend what the comprehensive plan says until the next process changes it. So that, that's a big concern that I have. I know, um, in the staff report, um, it also mentions the fact that, um, there is a lot of area out there that's already currently zoned C three, um, that isn't developed. So I think one of the questions in terms of if you're looking at, um, the rules that we're supposed to be reviewing in terms of rezoning standards, um, you know, has a demonstrated community need been met? I don't know that I heard tonight that a demonstrated community need has been met. Would it adversely affect nearby lands? I think the comprehensive plan envisioned as this area develops in the future that this would be more of a transition area because you have more of a higher land use proposed in the future land use plan, um, to the east and the south, and then as you move further towards Laurel Bay, um, it becomes more rural. So there's an opportunity for this to become that transition between those types of land uses. Obviously, these seventy-foot wide minimum lots and the higher density is a pretty big shift over, um, what's allowed under the T two. So I, I think there is a, an impact that could adversely impact the nearby lands. The other thing that The other thing that I guess I continue to be a little bit frustrated with is that through this process, we're supposed to be evaluating these developments in terms of whether or not they adequately can be served by various infrastructure. We didn't hear from the school. We don't really have anything to indicate, even in a preliminary fashion, that traffic can be addressed. We, we see a little bit of the suggestion for stormwater. I know that there are standards in place as you move through the development process and you get into more of the engineering. But I think we need to at least hear a, a certain level of assurance that those things can be met in order for us to say yes. We're confident that infrastructure won't adversely be affected by this development. I think that's all I had.
Well, thank you for your comments there.
We did receive, we did receive letters from Beaufort-Jasper Water and Sewer that hit that said that service availability through that area as well as South Carolina electric and gas. So as far as infrastructure, some of that, we did receive letters of service.
I think we're, I think, my reference to what you were saying was the TIA that would talk, would address the traffic and the roadway infrastructure, the ingress and egress and the multiple roads that have to be addressed for the traffic that's, and might be anticipated in this area. And we have no idea, as, as John said, we have no idea of what that impact might be, even on a preliminary basis. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're actually comprehensive plan. I got a copy of the comprehensive plan right there in my hand. We were not in agreement with that.
Yeah.
So.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is, this is at the.
I know, he said something too.
Well, I understand, but we're, we're trying to follow a process here. Further comments, please. Eugene?
I, I'm new here, so I'll take a chance on some of the things I can say. Can people hear me before I continue? This evening, I drove through the area and it was a rude awakening because other times I've driven through Beaufort and I've driven through other areas, well, all of Beaufort County. I saw areas where the drainage leaves a lot to be desired, where the roads are not maintained, if there are roads there. I think that we have to look, and developers have to look, at the surrounding communities. And there was no mention of that, whether there should have been or not, I don't know. Whether changing these two arms sticking into the current zoning with C3 is desirable, I would find, I would seriously question. I agree with what I heard about all the approved developments that have not been started or just barely getting started. That's not good. It's almost like, and I understand businesses. You bank your land when you can get it and you develop it when you have the funds and the opportunity to do so. But it's not good that all this, these things are changing and we're not dealing with the existing community while they're changing. I hope I'm making a little bit of sense out of that. This is not something that overly impresses me. And while I haven't voted, if, if a vote's gonna be taken tonight, I'm not encouraged by this. I, I think there's, and, and I understand the existing homeowner wanting to get, to sell their property and reap the capital gain and have resources. But I don't think that's our responsibility to make sure they can do that. So.
Thank you. Other comments? Dan, did you want to say something?
As a developer, I would state my, my opposition to this, to this plan. And I would base it on the fact that there is quite a backlog and we have a responsibility not to over imbibe, which I think is the case here. And I would add, as a developer, that I, I find the plan extremely unimaginative. This is tiki-taki houses all in a row. And I understand the concept of affordability. But I, I have to say that as difficult as this site is, there's two legs in a, in a body and it's a very awkward sight. But it's very clear that the planners of this site have maximized their density and it lacks plan excellence. And I think we are at a point as a board with what's happening in Beaufort County that we should only approve things that get an A or a B and this plan gets a C or a D. It's just not imaginative. And given all the other things that are going on in this area, I would express my opposition to it.
Thank you, Dan.
So, yeah, I've got one more thing to say.
Go ahead.
You know, there's the old saying about build it and they will, they will come. That's what this looks like to me. And, you know, we build all this out, people will come and they'll make their money and everybody will be happy, except for the people that live here already. So, and if you're just, we don't have this overarching plan for Beaufort-Jasper, for infrastructure, to accommodate anything like this. So let's just damn more people in. That makes no sense to me. I can't get behind this one.
Anything further? If not, may I ask for a motion regarding the zoning map amendment rezoning request? John?
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the 98 Jennings Road rezoning request, based on the staff report and the testimony we've heard tonight in our discussion and the review against the amendment review standards, I would make a motion for a recommendation to the county council to deny this zoning request.
Second? Have a second? We have a motion for recommending denial of the zoning map amendment. Any further discussion before we take a vote? All those in favor of recommendation denying the zoning map amendment, raise your hand. The decision is unanimous. The zoning map amendment is recommended for denial to the county council. Thank you. All right, folks, we, we have to continue on here. So if you could please, if you want to stay, that's fine. If you don't want to stay, that's okay too. We're gonna be, we have a couple more issues to decide. But this issue is decided for tonight by us. All right. We ready to move forward?
No, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. There is a proposed amendment to Appendix C4 Buckwalter Parkway to the Community Development Code. Do we have, Rob, you gonna address that?
Yes, this is a staff-initiated amendment. And we recommend that we would like to delay action on this because staff is still reviewing the engineering study that is behind the, the recommended changes here. So we just want to make sure that we're ready to bring this forward. But it's a very simple change having to do with, if you're aware, in our Community Development Code, we have corridor-specific access management plans in Appendix C, and this is moving one of the intersections. We want to make sure that we, that we have all the information to bring it forward.
And reading the document, I could ask one question. It was necessitated, this amendment, or is necessitated by the proposed location, relocation of the Bluffton Parkway?
Yes, and that's something, you know, in, in the future plans that will, will explain.
But that's not known yet. So, I mean, the plan could change, what the engineering plan could change for the traffic access, I mean, the light access and so on. Traffic light access.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it's withdrawn. Great, thank you.
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
I read what you, what we received on the proposal. And I was trying to find it on the map and scanning down. It wasn't easy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would say, it said things in there like the proposed or thought about relocation of Bluffton Parkway. It would help me tremendously when you submit next time if there, and I'm not talking photograph pictures, but drawings that give me an idea of what you're talking about. Because translating one, and it's the same with the next report where they saying if rainfall is so much and it goes, the level of water is gonna go up a certain amount. Seeing what that impact would be is a lot better for me. And I know there are a lot of visual people. So I think it would be very helpful if we had something.
Yeah. The last time you submitted something, that was back in 2021 on the Buckwalter Parkway where you changed.
Yes.
You did have a map. You showed a map.
With the updated engineering study, we'll have that information for you when we bring this forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rob.
All right.
Okay, I guess we're up to comprehensive plan amendment to add the Beaufort County Long-Term Resilience Strategy as an appendix to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Well, I would like to give an introduction.
Sure.
And then I'm gonna hand it off to, I think many of you remember Juliana Smith, Juliana Smith, sorry. She's back working for us.
Yay.
Doing a lot of work with the Green Space Program, but also picking up on some of the, the resilience planning that we've been, we've been doing. So she'll be able to provide a presentation. The document that you have before you really is a combination of, I would say, four or five years of work that we've had to put off for various reasons. It started with a, what we call the Sea Level Rise Task Force. And it was a group of people made up of different planners in the county and the municipalities. We had representatives from the development community, from the environmental community, all on this, this task force looking at the risks that Beaufort County faces due to our location on the, on the coast and the, in the paths of hurricanes and also with, with the future, you know, with concerns about climate change and sea level rise. That work was kind of put on hold with COVID. And then as soon as we got it up and running around, out of COVID, then the comp plan really took over. And so a lot of the ideas that we, we were beginning to develop, this document, made its way into the comprehensive plan. But what we really wanted to do was finish this work because we believe, this study really takes the different parts of the comprehensive plan, puts them in one document that kind of defines an overall strategy of how we want to address resilience planning. Another exciting thing that has happened is that we have interests from other departments in the county as well. Our engineering department, our CIP, Department Stormwater, Public Works, have, all have an interest in these resilient strategies because a lot of what we do as a county, where we build future roads, future buildings, is impacted by, you know, we, we want to make sure we're putting them in the right location to put them out of harm's way. And so that as well, and so we have representatives from those departments here today and they'll be able to provide some information as, as we give this presentation. And then topping that off, as we were finishing our comprehensive plan, the state, for one thing, they created an Office of Resiliency. And they changed the planning enabling legislation to require a resilience element in the comprehensive plan. So in our, in our current comprehensive plan that we adopted two years ago, we addressed these issues, but they're scattered throughout the document is kind of one of the, the three themes. This is what we're recommending today will be, we're recommending to be adopted as a, an appendix of the plan where all the resilient strategies are in one document and meeting the requirements of the state enabling legislation. So we're hoping to accomplish a lot of goals. And we believe that the, the timing is good. And I'm gonna let Juliana take over and, and just give you an overall brief of the document and.
Thank you, Rob.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's nice to see some of you all again. And for those of you who have not met me already, my name is Juliana Smith. I'm a long-range planner like Kristen here at Beaufort County. And as Rob mentioned, I work on our Green Space Program and I work on resilience issues. And we find that those things kind of are related to each other in many ways. But tonight, I'm going to be speaking specifically about our Long-Term Resilience Strategy. And I got ahead of myself. I didn't put my booklet out. Here we go. So Rob actually included an image in here and we kind of breezed over it, but I thought, let's look at it since we put it in our presentation. So we're gonna go back one slide. This is Irma in 2017. So this is what we saw at Waterfront Park in downtown Beaufort. And Mr. Myers, you were talking about visualizing what sea level rise looks like. Now, we're not anticipating this level of sea level rise by 2050. We are expecting maybe about a foot to a foot and a half. So just, that basically equates to our, our king tides essentially that we get now will become our normal tides. That's what we'll see as a normal high tide. And in the Long-Term Resilience Strategy, we do try to break that down with a, a chart called a Total Water Approach. And if you've had a chance to look at it, it's on page 16. Kind of just helps us visualize what we see today and what that will be in the future. Will that become the new normal and how does that change? So I just wanted to mention that at the top. All right, take my breath. So as Rob mentioned, we have a South Carolina Office of Resilience. And they defined resilience because you can really use resilience to talk about anything and everything. As far as the state is concerned, it is the ability of our communities, our economies and our ecosystems to be able to anticipate, absorb, recover and thrive in the face of environmental hazards, well, environmental change and natural hazards. So that's what the state is looking at. And I like to look at things a little bit differently. I don't always just want to be able to read them. So I included these charts here as well to help us understand what resilience looks like. So on the left, you see a chart with a less resilient system. Functional capacity is that Y-axis on the left side of the chart. And time is there at the bottom of the charts as our X-axis. Business as usual is just operating as we are today without implementing any adaptations to address resilience. So we're moving along the timeline. One of our systems hits a point where there's an acute hazard. This could be the buildings or the roads that Rob was mentioning earlier. That acute hazard affects those buildings and roads. We have a response time and we have a recovery time. Now, we either recover fully and we go back to business as usual. But in the meantime, we've lost that functional capacity for a certain amount of period, amount of time. So if it was a road and the road was overtopped by a higher-than-usual tide, that road is no longer functional for as long as that tide is there flooding it. So that means folks who need to get from point A to point B using that road can't do that anymore. Maybe they're getting to jobs. Maybe they're getting to medical systems like hospitals or pharmacies. Maybe they're just going to visit family and friends. Maybe they're going to grocery stores. But either way, we've lost that functional capacity. So we still had a loss, my point is, even if we return back to that business-as-usual baseline. There are instances where we won't return to the business as usual. We'll have a permanent loss, which is what that less resilient chart system is showing. On the right side, we have a more resilient system. This is where we take proactive approaches to improve the resilience of our systems, our road networks, our buildings. That brings our business-as-usual level up higher than what it was before so that when an acute hazard happens, yes, we experience a response. Yes, things happen, but it is a shorter recovery time and we return back to that pre or above business-as-usual more resilient status. So really, our goal here with our Long-Term Resilience Strategy is to anticipate what our, our expected imp- is to anticipate what our, our expected impacts are as we are thinking about basically three things as far as this plan is concerned. And that is sea level rise, more frequent intense storms, not necessarily more intense storms, but more frequent intense storms, and the impacts of tropical cyclones. And how do we anticipate those impacts and upgrade our infrastructure and put into place policies for future infrastructure to, to basically consider those things and absorb potential impacts? So that's those charts. We'll move on. Now, we do know that impacts from sea level rise have already been happening. Here is the Charleston, South Carolina Tide Gauge. It's located in Fort Sumter. It's been online for over 100 years, which is pretty exciting to have that kind of data set. What it shows us since the early 1920s is that we have seen about 1.1 foot of sea level rise in the Charleston Harbor area. Now, it's not a steady amount of sea level rise year to year. We're starting to see a change. About 2000, the year 2000 is when we started to see, well, hold on, let me back up. Half of that foot of sea level rise has happened since the year 2000. So six inches of that 1.1 foot has occurred since the year 2000, which indicates we're seeing a rapid increase in how much sea level rise is occurring in recent history. So it's moving along a little faster. Now, we do expect in the Charleston Harbor area to see a foot to a foot and a half of sea level rise by 2050, depending on a variety of scenarios. Our long term resilience strategy focuses on the Fort Pulaski Tide Gauge. It is closer to us and it experiences a similar tidal amplitude. They're getting those nine foot tides regular, regularly there, just like we are up here. And they're seeing the same trend. So it doesn't quite have the 100 years worth of data collection. It will by the 1930s, or not 1930s, the 2030s. But what we're seeing is it's on track to show us about 1.8 feet of sea level rise having occurred by the time we get to that decade. So it's also showing that rapid increase in the amount of sea level rise we're seeing on an annual basis over the past 24 years. So it's sticking to that trend. And again, we're seeing about a foot to a foot and a half of anticipated sea level rise in the next 25 years by 2050. So things are coming. Here's a different way to look at it. I'm going to let y'all absorb that while I take some water. So what does sea level rise mean to us? Those higher tides? It also means that we start seeing more, something that's called sunny day flooding. So that's where you're flooding, not because it's raining or because a hurricane came by. You're flooding because the tide is higher. And so different areas will experience water coming into properties, overtopping roads. And we're already seeing this occurring at that Fort Pulaski Tide Gauge. So this chart here shows you on the left, on that Y axis, the number of flood days at the Fort Pulaski Tide Gauge. A flood day happens when the high tide hits higher than 9.5 feet at the Fort Pulaski Tide Gauge. That's when they start to see impacts of flooding in and around the area. So we have had a really stark trend occurring where you see at the end of the chart here, in our recent years, over the past 20 years, we're seeing much more flood days happening at the Fort Pulaski Tide Gauge. I did the math since 2010, 70% of those flood days have happened, of all of the flood days that you see here. So it's following that general trend that these things are happening more frequently in recent years. It's not a consistent thing that we've seen over the past 100 years. And I say this not to be scary. It's not my point. I say this to say, hey, this is happening. And it would really behoove us to start thinking about what that means for our future. And it would behoove our, our communities, our economies and our environmental systems. So that's what this plan is all about. How do we continue to thrive here? Now, as Rob mentioned, we adopted our comprehensive land, plan in 2021. It addressed resilience as one of three overarching themes. So it's interwoven throughout the entire plan. There are a few specific things that come from it that directly address resilience. But basically, as far as a comprehensive plan is concerned, resilience is our ability to adapt and thrive in a dynamic coastal environment and a changing economy. So we're kind of looking at both sides. Because what's happening to sea level rise impacts our economies. It impacts what we can do here. It impacts what businesses are successful here. So they're intertwined. The plan advises studying, monitoring and addressing the impacts of higher tides and other environmental hazards. And it also recommends vulnerability assessments for critical county infrastructure. Overall, it's promoting proactive resilience planning. So we come to the more recent years since we've adopted the plan, to the long term resilience strategy. Now broadly speaking, and it is about a 52 page long document. So you can get into those nitty gritty details if you're kind of a details nerd like I am. It's there for you. But broadly speaking, for the purposes of tonight's meeting, what our long term resilience strategy does is it starts out by summarizing those past environmental trends that I touched on already, going into rain data as well and experiences from tropical cyclones too. So our history with that. It gauges anticipated future trends. It's looking at data that's coming from NOAA that is broken down to regions for the United States. So we're looking at our southeastern region and what we expect to happen here. The whole country is not experiencing the same thing. It's different across the board. I think this is just a crazy fact, but in Alaska, they're experiencing sea levels dropping, not rising. So it just depends on where you are. It's not uniform across the country. And then it recommends strategies to fortify Beaufort County resilience. And I'll talk about that here in a second. And overall is supplementing and supporting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So we really see it as a more intentional look at resilience. And that's why we think it should be an appendix to the comprehensive plan, essentially as our resilience chapter. So those four resilience strategy groups are probably going to be the most important things for staff to be aware of because these are the things that we would be carrying out in order to improve our resilience. It is a cyclical process and it's divided up into four groups. Awareness is kind of the first group that we're starting with. So it's an education campaign, not just for communities, not just for leadership and decision makers, but also for ourselves, staff included. It also encourages facilitating and building data sharing networks with our partners in the community who are interested in the same goals. And so we do have inclusion in here from both of our military installations, well, two of our military installations, because they too are concerned about resilience. Then we have a study phase. This is basically looking at our data gaps and filling those so that we can better plan for resilience. There's an action phase. So that's implementing recommendations that are derived from our studies. And then there's the reassess phase. And I think that this phase shouldn't be understated, even though it's the shortest, smallest category in the long term resilience strategy. Because this phase has us return to what we've done. Look at the policies we've put in place. Look at the projects we've implemented. Look at the most recent science data on climate. And make sure everything's still functioning the way we intended it to. Do we need to tweak things? Do we need to adjust? So I think that's really important and a prudent part of our resilience strategy groups. And then we go back to awareness. It just keeps going. In the meantime, water again. Leave y'all hanging. The suspense, I know.
This is excellent. This is excellent.
Thanks. And I tend to talk faster than I can breathe, which is what you all are hearing right now. Trying to rein it in. In the meantime, a coastal resilience working group was formed and Rob mentioned this. So it's an interdepartmental group that has come together to really address kind of department specific strategies for pursuing a more resilient future in Beaufort County. It includes the Planning and Zoning Department, the Facilities Management and Capital Projects Department, the Engineering Department and the Public Works Departments. And we do have two representatives here today. We've got Mr. Brian Bauer from the Engineering Department and Mr. Eric Larson from the Public Works Department. And I'm going to yank them up here to talk a little bit about their inclusions. What they, what we have all done is added another appendix to this long term resilience strategy that details what those departments want to do to pursue resilience. So come on up here, guys.
Can I ask one question before you?
Yes.
The sense of urgency is imminent. I mean, you already showed that we had a tipping point. Do we have a, what I would call a resiliencies czar? Somebody who's cracking the whip and making sure this stuff is happening in real time?
I would say that the South Carolina Office of Resilience is sort of doing this and that the state law that happened in 2020 is requiring all comprehensive plans moving forward include resilience as a chapter. So you have, what, 10 elements already? I think. Now we're adding an 11th and it's resilience. So yeah, I would say that there's a bit of whip cracking happening with regard to that coming down from the state requiring communities to think about this. But I do think that to some degree, we have to be self motivated.
I'm thinking of a homegrown czar, somebody who in Beaufort County, who's going to lead the initial, we're all three weeks, three months away from the next hurricane season. You know, and it's, each year it's gotten a little bit more scary at times. And it's going to continue that way based on what you're showing us and what I'm personally experiencing where I live. Had we thought about, I mean, you're talking about and throughout the document, a lot of, a lot of partnerships. A lot of people have to make this thing happen.
Yes.
But there's got to be somebody leading the charge locally.
Yes.
To make sure it happens in real time.
Yes.
Do we have an Office of Resiliency locally person sitting there in charge of the, overall charge of all of these departments moving forward?
I would say not yet. Do we? Do you want to answer this? Or the comprehensive plan? Is that where you're going?
Yeah, I was simply going to say, I think if you wait to the next slide, it is one of the recommendations in our comprehensive plan. And so we anticipate that something.
I missed that because I read, I was a nerd that read every page, but I missed that one.
It's in there somewhere.
It's, yeah, it's in the comp plan. I, I know.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to these guys and then I'll come back to some of.
Please.
Thank you, Juliana. Thank you, commissioners, for letting me come speak today. My name is Brian Bauer and I'm representing the Engineering Department. So just to echo what Rob and Juliana said, the Engineering Department is committed to in starting to include resilience in this and supports the implementation of this long range resilience strategy. Through working with Juliana and coming up, we've come up with a few, identified a few key areas where we can work to implement resilience in what we do. The first is we understand the need for vulnerability assessment to look at our causeways, our low lying roadways that, you know, do see issues with the king tides or storm tides of overtopping, especially those that serve as evacuation routes or the only entrance and exit to a community. So that's the first thing is just so we can figure out where the issues lie and we can start addressing it. And that also through the bipartisan infrastructure law, the Inflation Reduction Act, there's a lot of money out there for resilience right now. And having this study in place and a list of projects identified is key to helping us, you know, be able to qualify for some of that grant funding that's out there. The other thing is as part of this, we need to establish a minimum roadway elevation for when plans are coming through. I think y'all might have mentioned it earlier. We can set a minimum so that we can try to keep this from happening before it begins. As part of the review process, state this to, you know, a road needs to be this elevation if it is only entrance or exit out of a community. And the last thing is we need to really be able to go back and access what's going on and where we can implement this. And coming up with a resilience review program to look at our projects and see where we can implement more resiliency, whether it's green infrastructure to help with wave mitigation or. So that's the big thing we need to really do is in a resilience review. And I think one of the slides said Envision. There is a program out that was started by APWA and the U.S. Association of Civil Engineers called Envision, which is for reviewing infrastructure projects to rate them for resilience and sustainability. So those are all things. And you talk about the urgency. These are all things that can be accomplished in, I would say, the short to midterm. So this is something that we are going to look at addressing and moving forward with. And Neil Desai is listed on here. He wasn't able to attend, so I will speak for the public works as well. And the big thing for them is another vulnerability assessment, looking at the stormwater, the marine, the landings, the fishing piers, and seeing where those can be addressed and updated as well. Some of this has already been done. They have looked at stormwater on Lays Island, St. Helena and Bluffton as well. So they are on the start to some of that. And they've done a marine facility assessment as well. So those are, can be built on with more resilience focus, but they've looked at some of that already. And then updating the existing standards. There's the Soloco Manual for Stormwater. So they can look at updating that with more resilience function and build on that that they've already established. So that's the Engineering Public Works. So I'll pass it on to Eric Larson now, who's the Director of the Facilities Management Capital Projects.
One thing, the, the military did an extensive resiliency study. Took, I think they took two years to do it and had all kinds of action plans and priorities. And importance of what their message is hits us square because they're such a big part of our economy, particularly north of Broad. I'm, I'm thinking there's lots of information there that's scientifically based that they've come across and prioritize.
Yeah. I believe you're talking about the MIR, which ElCog did.
Yes.
And it was a great document. They're actually working, have one of their first prototype projects out there now. I believe it's out to bid. So they should be hopefully starting that soon. But yeah, that's a great document, something that we can follow on. And that is where we probably need to get is a combination of all the departments to look at things holistically and come up with a document like that. It may be different consultants or different team members that will look at each item individually. First review on the roads will be different than what Eric would use to review the facilities. But yeah, we need to get something where we have all those places in one. So.
I've got a question too. Also, how, how well are you working hand in hand with the state on a lot of the existing roads out there? Because we have county roads that have, that are problematic. We have state roads that are problematic. And how is this going to be tied in altogether? And, and as another, since you're also talking about public works, I'll give you two questions at once. I noticed, you know, the list of folks that were involved in this. And don't get me wrong, I think this is phenomenal. I think it's, unfortunately, Cecil and I were saying this is probably almost too late, but I'm glad that we're moving forward with this to have this vision to go forward. But as I looked at the list of folks and all the entities that were brought into this building of the resilience program, I realized this is a public sector type of thing. Did we talk to Beaufort Jasper as far as their input to this? Because they also have a very important part when the floodwaters come, people losing water, people. We talked, one of the things you folks talked about in this was the sewer systems that they would like to see us all go to sewer system. A lot of folks that are currently on septic, that can't get to sewer systems because it's cost prohibitive. So I don't know how well we've touched base with those folks. And I'd be curious to see if we're going to include them going forward.
Yeah. So to your first question, we haven't fully defined the scope yet. But I think our intent is to look at the roads in the county, whether they are county maintained, state maintained. Because we do work with the state through our CTC program. We, we do resurface on state roads. And so we do work with the state pretty closely. A lot of the projects we do are on the state system. So that is something that we would probably look at state and county roads as well. And I think Juliana wants to discuss that.
Yeah. Regarding Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, conversations are starting with them about that very topic. Where is sewer an appropriate thing to do? Because you're exactly right. It's not going to be appropriate everywhere. And then what can we do in places where it's not appropriate? So we're actually already involved in a study that's looking at septic systems and how they function as sea level rises and how that may or may not impact groundwater. And so we're kind of coming to the end of that study. And we have a meeting planned with a lot of different entities at the end of May, including Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, to talk with them about what findings we're seeing and what that means for our future and how we all can work together collaboratively to make it more resilient for everyone. The, the right solution isn't going to be the same for every community. You are right about that.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Could I do a follow up?
Sure.
Just to follow on the, the whole sewer and who has sewer and whether, whether it's BJ Water or whether it's your own septic field and so on. That is going to impact development absolutely and this commission. So as you all have these meetings and go for it, I think that would be fantastic to share with us. And I would love it either a workshop or for you guys to communicate that with us. And I know on St. Helena, it's, it's a huge, big deal. We know in poorer areas, areas of Hilton Head, it's a big deal. And BJ Water actually has, with the development of DOTA, BJ Water went out there and, you know, made it possible for DOTA to exist. You know, that, that all happened in the early 1980s. The second thing, just to follow up, is that what I didn't see enough of here and what's deeply frustrating for me is. deeply frustrating for me, is that South Carolina DOT is hard to deal with, and the issue that's come up in front of us is Highway 21 and Warsaw Island Causeway.
Right.
We all know this. I mean, Jeffrey Gardner and many of his neighbors, friends, colleagues, family members have talked to us about it. It comes up almost all the time at the, at our St. Helena Island CPO meetings. So the point is that, quote-unquote, nothing can be done because DOT owns Highway 21, but it sheds water, of course, onto the perpendicular Warsaw Island Causeway. So I was wondering how you think the relationship with DOT is going? Because I saw them less communicated with here than I would have hoped for, but maybe you could tell me more.
I mean, I would say this is a internal county department, we work with the DOT every day in the Engineering Department. Like I said, a lot of our projects are on DOT roads. As part of our CTC program, we get funding from the state and we resurface state roads. So I think we probably have a pretty good working relationship with the DOT, and this is where we need to kind of have the vulnerability assessment to tell us where the problems are.
You mean to prioritize them, kind of?
Yes, yeah. And we do know Warsaw Island, we've heard, but again, that is a DOT road, so we just have to follow the process and work with them to get the proper permissions and get, make sure that their sign-off is there. But yeah, so I think that, you know, there will be hoops to jump through as far as permits and getting plans approved, but I don't think that they would really be, really fight us on it, especially if it was something like this, because they know where the problems are also. And the big thing is, there are certain things like Warsaw that we know are problems now. A part of this is identifying ones that will be problems in the future as well.
Warsaw, I mean, not everyone on this, you know, committee knows it, but to me Warsaw is the canary in the coal mine.
Yeah.
I mean, it's so obvious, like even at King Tides.
Yeah, and.
And I know there's, Juliana, you probably know it more, the Sea Grant Consortium and College of Charleston, they have a, I don't know, a unit, a monitoring unit, one of eight that went in Beaufort County out there?
Yes, that's the groundwater monitoring study, so there are wells on Warsaw Island, there are wells over in the fourth quarter, over, yeah, in, near Penn Center and right at the intersection of 21 at Martin Luther.
At MLK, yeah.
Thank you. Martin Luther, yeah. There are also, just since we're talking about it, not to get too into the weeds, but there are also wells in the Mossy Oaks community, there are groundwater monitoring wells in the Alljoy Community, and there are groundwater monitoring wells in Shell Point as well. So these are all areas where we know that there are flooding issues, what does this mean for our infrastructure there, how do we continue to live there safe? So something, yes.
So that data is all coming into you guys, I mean, as Ed said, there's not like a czar in Beaufort County per se, but there's a four-part czarishness with these czars.
Sounds like we need one.
Yes.
Right, I can't even, I can't even find the word to describe it, and I'm a writer, yeah.
Yes, and I would say that.
The czars and czarinas, okay?
A big goal for all of us in this room, for this long-term resilience strategy, is to build those data sharing networks so that it's not just us that knows what's happening, it's BJWSA, it's our DOT, it's our DOT, it's all of these entities that are operating here and helping to support people's lives here.
Right. Sorry, I have another question, but I'll let you guys go on, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Planning Commission, I'm Eric Larson, I'm the Director of Capital Projects, under my purview is also Facilities Management. Just a little background, I used to work for Beaufort County as a stormwater manager, worked with Mr. Pappas and several of you also look familiar to me. I came back in 2022 when the county created Capital Projects Department, and they split away non-road-related projects from engineering and put it with Facilities Management to create this department. And so the focus of this division that I'm over is the fact that we build and own and maintain all the community facilities that are non-road related, that's Brian's bailiwick. So resilience for us in the Capital Projects Facilities is a little different, it's not just sea level rise or what you've been talking about up to this point, it's also looking at, and I'll throw in one extra word, sustainability. It's when we build a new facility or upgrade a new facility that we're doing so in a way that we can match the curve that Juliana was showing earlier, that we improve our facilities so they quickly respond and rebound and come back online and be fully functional without any loss of their use or a long-term damage to the facility. So, you know, we're talking about libraries, recreation centers, our public safety facilities like the Sheriff's Department, fire and EMS stations, these are places that are public buildings that can become shelters during a storm, they can become safe havens when the people are displaced from their homes. And so we are building to a much higher standard than even is required by the International Building Code, because we're in a very unique environment, so we're not citing new facilities that are flood-prone and only accessible by roads that are going to be flooded in the event of a storm. We're looking at the location of where we put these facilities, and then we're building to a higher standard. And the reason that's all important is because these are not always the cheapest properties on the block when it comes time to cite a new facility, and so, you know, it's important for us to have a good plan and a methodical reason for why we select what we select. You know, in addition to sea level rise, we're talking about changes in weather patterns, storms are more violent, there are, you know, stronger winds, more downpour and a shorter duration of time, these are overwhelming some of our existing facilities with the flat roofs, the, with internal plumbing such as this building, for example, this has just recently been redone, if you've noticed, over the course of a couple of years, we've had construction going on in this building. We're redesigning and upfitting our buildings to be more resilient to stronger storm events so that we can convey water off the flat roofs and get them through the internal plumbing and out before it actually starts leaking and damaging the building. We're looking at our HVAC systems, the use of generators to make these buildings so they can come back online immediately even when the utility power is down. These are all things that we're looking at when we're doing new construction or remodeling for our newer, newer buildings. Excuse me, remodeling our older buildings, I got ahead myself. So just real quickly to wrap up, you know, Juliana showed the chart already, so our first step in our resiliency plan within our department is to educate, 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 and the county council, because again, I want to go back to that comment I made a few minutes ago, there's all these things we need to do above and beyond what you would typically expect when you're building a building, because we do have a public facility that becomes a place where people go to and gather when they need help and need assistance. And we can't do that on the good, cheap land, we have to put that in a place that's high and dry, so to speak, and that all has a dollar sign associated with it. So our first and foremost goal is to educate the county council on what we're doing in our program, why we're doing what we're doing, and how it's going to impact us long-term cost-wise. We recently completed a facility master plan in 2021, that was really, how much space do we need, how many people are we going to have, what services are we going to provide? We want to supplement that study with the next step, which is a conditions and vulnerability assessment, where we look at our facilities, our systems within our facilities, the foundation, the elevation of the building, its wind capacity, its penetrations, because that's where the water gets in, is on the windows and the soffits and the doors and the rooftops. Get an inventory of all that, find out where we're at and where we need to be, determine that delta, price that delta out, schedule that delta by priorities over the next 10, 20 years, and put together that plan that will really get us to where we need to be to be more resilient, more sustainable, and then implement that plan, as she mentioned already, reassess that plan, and then just start the cycle all over again. Do that study every five, three to five years, see where we're at, see where we've been, what we've done to improve, and then how we're going to move forward going forward. So that's the Capital Projects and Facilities Management definition of resiliency. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Any questions for me, before I say that? Time to go home.
Well, I'm sorry, just, these are just quick questions that are coming up to me. With the amount of work that it appears that you have to do with all the facilities that we do have within the county, and this is probably off into another venue here that I'm not even going into, do you have the manpower, do you expect to have the manpower to be able to do this within a timely manner so that we're not behind the eight ball with a lot of these?
The answer to that is yes and no. Now, we have very capable staff, we are, we have vacancies that we're trying to fill, we've actually identified a position that we are currently advertising to fill that if hired, they would take the lead in creating this facility condition assessment I just mentioned. But we're also hedging our bets, so to speak, we are asking for funding to have outside consultants to come in, because with 100 and, 100-plus, I can't remember the exact number, I don't want to guess, 100-plus facilities, to do this in a timely manner, we might need to bring in a MEP-type of firm that can quickly inventory and assess our conditions and then hand that off to staff, and then at that point, we would have a working document that we can, that we feel confident we can maintain and keep updated over time.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, speaking of budgets, I don't know if this is still available, but the Office of Resiliency, not too long ago, had an $80 million handout budget, so they were trying to give to various grants, to various institutions looking at them. Are we going after resilience dollars at the state level?
Not right now, we aren't.
Okay.
But the goal, and how about, I go ahead and move to the next slide, because I think that will help us. But I do just want to sum up really quickly, what our departments, all of our departments here, the two kind of main things that we're talking about, is making sure the infrastructure that we already have on the ground is retrofitted and adapted to be more resilient in the future, and that new infrastructure is considering resilience on the front end, so we don't have to do this retrofit and adaptation. So that's really kind of the two big goals that our departments are talking about with regard to the appendix there. And these guys did a really great job contributing to it, a lot of the stuff that they said tonight is in there, but there's a lot more, a lot more details that you can go and get, yes, sir.
So, it's great that we're looking forward for anything that's new infrastructure, but the thing that's really at risk is the existing infrastructure.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
So, what are the plans there?
Yes, and that's what those vulnerability assessments would do, is they would look at everything that we have on the ground now, assess their vulnerability to the anticipated environmental trends of the future, and tell us what we need to do to make sure they're resilient, how we adapt them and retrofit them to be more resilient, yes, sir. It's a very good point.
Juliana, do you have a sense of what area, or what areas need to be retrofitted the most? I mean, when you said, you know, infrastructure that isn't there, I would say failing, and in that I put drainage and flooding, particularly, I mean, I only know St. Helena, but I'm sure it's around the county. So do you have any sense of what is the biggest bucket of need out there, in what area it exists or not? And that, I suppose, would lead to getting grants to help assess that.
We, I think we do have some data already that could help us move towards that, but a really important part of a lot of these grants is that we have to have these planning documents that show we've identified these areas and these projects. And I think Brian spoke to that, if we don't have those planning documents showing that, then we apply for grants to get those planning documents. So to use the term, we want to be behind that eight ball, right? That's a good thing to be behind the eight ball? No, we don't want to be behind the eight ball.
We don't want to be behind the eight ball.
Sorry. We want to have the plans in place all ready, so now we can go get that funding or not kind of having to take that extra step. So, yeah, we're, that is what we're working to do. Okay, so this is the last slide, so you can all breathe a sigh of relief, and I will try to keep it short, but essentially, what's next? What are we going to do now? So the first step is to adopt the long-term resilience strategy as an appendix to the comprehensive plan, where it will essentially act as our resilience chapter. The next step for us in the short term, what we see as being most important, is initiating those vulnerability assessments, so we can take a look at what we have on the ground and make sure we can adapt and retrofit it to the future trends that we're anticipating. Then we want to identify funding, so going after those grants, working with partners to get these projects in place, and also consider a recommendation in the comprehensive plan about hiring resilient staff to work on these projects and get them done. And then last but not least, we're implementing those recommendations, we are retrofitting, we are adapting, we are putting into place policies that are taking into consideration resilience on that front end. So this is kind of our short-term piece of the long-term strategy that we have on our radar right now about what we'd like to see coming down the pipe in the near future. And that's it. So if you have any more questions, we're happy to field them. Yes, sir.
Two quick questions. When I read the document, there were a lot of great action items that had been identified in terms of the strategies moving forward. I may have missed it, but I didn't necessarily see a responsible party assigned to each of these action items. I'm guessing that most of them are going to fall within those four boxes in terms of the agencies that you just identified, but clearly there are some that don't fit neatly into there, and I just wonder if you've already kind of looked at who those responsible entities would be for the action items?
Yeah, there's, oftentimes with the action items, we have recommended partners that are included, you know, especially for our research projects, but there are specific action items that are, are speaking to specific departments, like EMS is a whole section in here about how do we handle our, well, our hazard mitigation and our emergency services. So it may not always be directly identified, but we have a pretty good idea of who's going to take on what and who we need to work with to get those projects done. And really quickly, Cecily, Highway 21, I was looking at the South Carolina's resilience plan that just was published, and there is verbiage in there, I haven't read the whole thing, I'm going through the executive summary, about taking a look at the road systems throughout South Carolina, so hopefully that means DOT is going to be more aligned and easier to work with on that. So I'm just letting you know, I'll get deeper into it and tell you if it supports my assumption here.
Thank you very much.
And the other question I had, do you see a role moving forward for your sea level rise task force, if nothing else, and a sounding board?
Yes, absolutely. So we're kind of changing the name to the Coastal Resilience Working Group, which right now is interdepartmental, but the intention for that group is to be similar to the Sea Level Rise Task Force, where we have members from the development community, we have our conservationists and environmentalists at the table, we have environmental educators at the table, we have community members at the table, all making sure that what we're putting into place is ideal for those areas, makes sense, and we're getting it done, basically holding us all accountable to those plans. So the intention is to continue a semblance of the Sea Level Rise Task Force, yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? When I've, oh, yes, sir.
First of all, you did a great job with the presentation.
Thank you. I've finally caught my breath.
And the picture.
Great.
I read through the document, and usually I go to sleep at least once while I'm reading through a document.
I understand.
But there was so much concern being expressed, I was feeling that concern, so it was well-written, you know?
Thank you.
And really appreciate that. The thing that could have maybe helped me a little bit was when I got to Section 6, I saw that a lot of things were already being addressed. It would have been great if it said upfront, you know.
What we were doing.
If Section 6 is coming in, in the middle of this sec, you know, just pointing out what's being done, because otherwise, we don't know, and then we have to go back and relate it to what it was, what was going on.
I see, yes.
That is just a suggestion, I appreciate everything you're doing, I would like to see in future things like this, and I'm trying to find an example, I never can when I want to, but where you use initials, and the first time you use the initials, you identify it. After that, I'm high and dry. So I mean, if there was a table like right at the front, that had all the initials and then what they equate to.
All the acronyms.
The acronyms.
Yep, all the abbreviations, yes. I can relate to that, I would appreciate something like that, too.
Really a great way to do it.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
It's nice to have people agree with me.
You're new.
That's perfect.
Really. It's like your second meeting.
The other thing is, I know there are a lot of municipalities that govern themselves within the county. Are they sharing this information, or are they receiving this information that you've developed? For example, I live on Hilton Head, we just passed this new funding for high school being completely rebuilt. Are they aware that, you know, because we haven't implemented changes yet, that maybe that school should be up a little higher, and maybe we shouldn't use flat roofs? And by the way, on the school board, I once said to the superintendent, I've never met a flat roof that didn't leak, so the next school that he built had a peaked roof on it, and they eliminated all the problem. Are we relaying this information that we're gathering to them so they can use it?
I would say, we right now have a relationship, kind of budding with Bluffton, they just did their comprehensive plan and have a resilience section in there, so we're working with them to start information sharing and partnering, but they're, as far as resilience in Hilton Head, from where I stand, I don't know that that's yet been developed. No, it's what we want to do, we want to have that network of data sharing. I don't know if these guys have a different experience.
I'd say we don't really have any resilience data sharing right now, I believe Hilton Head may be working all kinds of other things.
Yeah, I would not be surprised.
Duplication of effort, it's always good to have.
Yeah, I would recommend you make the same presentation to the Soloco people.
Oh, it's a great idea.
And their Northern Region Planning Implementation Committee, I mean, you've got multiple municipalities and county jurisdictions and between those two bodies that could hear, that need to hear this.
There's already too many.
There's already too many, well, people call them silos of excellence, I always call them silos of stupidity.
Yeah.
Where people want to build up their own little infrastructure and have that power because we all know knowledge is power, but the more we can tear those down within the communities, within the county, the more progress we're going to be able to make going forward.
Yes, great idea.
So I'm kind of curious as to what's your sense of what the surrounding counties are doing as far as resilience? Are we ahead of the curve, behind the curve, middle of the curve, you know?
I mean, we're not terrible, but it would be really great if we had this in place so that we could really more seriously take on resilience initiatives and get ahead of the curve. Now Charleston County has their own Office of Resilience already. The county, right, not the city? The county?
They both do.
Yeah, so they're already taking this head-on. And Charleston is, of course, at a different elevation than we are, and they are experiencing issues a little more pressingly than we are, but they have, they're definitely ahead of it. They are taking it on.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no further questions, will entertain a motion to recommend acceptance of the comprehensive plan amendment or not?
I saw move.
Well, make the full motion that you're citing the, I know, I know you don't like doing that. Just so it's very clear to people what we're approving.
It's clear for the record.
For the record.
Dudo.
No, that's, that's my problem always.
All right, behave, y'all.
Hold on, we're getting there.
I got it.
You got it? You want to say something?
No, that's okay, I'm scrolling down like you, so it's referencing the...
I move...
It's on the memo. Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
To approve and validate the comprehensive plan amendment to add the Beaufort County Long-Term Resilience Strategy as an appendix to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Yay!
Second.
Second, okay.
Jeez.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to accept amendment? It's unanimous.
Guys are doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
I think there's a sense of...
Please don't let it die on the vine.
The only part in common is it's a sense of urgency for people, for funding, you know, but my view is that there's smoke in the house, and soon, behind smoke, we know what happens.
Yep.
Change in charm.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of our action items agenda. Let's see, what else we have? Did you want to talk about, or is it, the discussion items? I had down here, comprehensive plan implementation status. Did you want to talk about that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Just reminder.
Okay.
This is the hand-holding side of the table.
Well, I realize that I'm keeping you from going home and having dinner, so I'll try to be quick, but so what we're handing out is basically a spreadsheet of all the recommendations to comprehensive plan, and then to date, our status of implementation. And I guess, you know, when we realized that we needed to update our comprehensive plan, the things that, or is, do you have enough copies?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. You know, we realized that a lot of our policies, you know, we're kind of, we wanted to stay the course, we realized that there are some things we wanted to change and update, but some of the things that we really wanted to focus on was how to make the document easier to read, you know, make it so that it kind of cuts to the chase and analyzes issues and then, and then, you know, has recommendations coming forward, rather than endless charts and graphs and, you know, that information's in there, but it's in the county atlas. So we wanted to make the plan user-friendly, but the other thing that we wanted to do was we wanted to really make it clear what items were considered action items, you know, things that you could either check off a box saying that, you know, ongoing, or that we've accomplished this. And so that, the recommendations in the plan, we kind of divide into two categories. One were more like policy positions, you know, that would guide decision-makers in how to make decisions, but the others were items that, you know, were action items, so you could take action and accomplish. And so I wanted to give Kristen a lot of credit because, you know, she went through and all of these and contacted all the departments and came up with an update. I was amazed at how much has actually been done. I mean, it's, you know, there's always a criticism with comprehensive plans, you do all this work, you check the box that you did it, and then it sits on the shelf until you got updated. And our hope is to, this is a living document, we're continually monitoring the status of implementation. So, you know, I realize this is a lot of information I've passed out, and so, you know, over the next month, you know, what we could do is maybe set up, you know, we could revisit, you know, based on what you've read in the implementation and action items, and if you have questions, we could raise them, and I also have a quick presentation, kind of providing a quick summary.
Workshop or a regular meeting, either?
It could be a regular meeting, I mean...
There's a lot of information.
Yeah. But I'll kind of run through, just to kind of give you an idea. A lot of this relates to what we've looked at already, you know, with the natural environment, you know, we've taken action, you know, these are just broad categories, but, you know, a lot of different action items in here, and that's what you have in the spreadsheet. But, you know, ordinance amendments, you know, a lot of the recommendations dealt with looking at our existing regulations, are they actually protecting what we've said they're going to protect, and reevaluating them as necessary. We've brought, we've brought forward in the last couple of years a number of ordinance amendments initiated by staff. Land preservation is another bundle of recommendations in our natural environment, and as you're aware, just from the presentation you saw at 5:30, you know, we have, you know, we've implemented, we have the green print map, it's online, we are continuing to implement the Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Program, and then we are kicking off the green, green space program. So we've kind of, you know, we're continuing that land preservation, monitoring and studying hazards, and this is a big part of that resilience strategy. And so we have recommendations in the plan that deal with putting tide gauges in rivers, looking at groundwater monitoring. In addition, looking at flooding patterns, you know, so our stormwater department is focused on different communities such as St. Helena Island, the Shell Point area, to look at drainage patterns. So all of that is arming ourselves with data so that we can, you know, be better informed in the future in taking actions about what we need to do to protect our environment. And then also outreach and education, you know, so we've, the Sea Level Rise presentation, you know, based on the comprehensive plan and the report that you've seen, we've led sessions at the SCAPA conference, you know, we've looked at different ways of outreach into the community to let them know what we're doing and really kind of network with other people in the community. Culture, you know, broadly, you know, our culture chapter covers a lot of different activities, but we've kind of bundled these recommendations, this is just a quick summary of what's in your spreadsheet. Historic preservation, we've been working on the historic Mitchellville community. We're currently beginning to update our above-ground historic resources survey, which was done more than 20 years ago. We've preserved a number of properties through the Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Program for agriculture, and also water access. That's a, that was an element in the comprehensive plan in dealing with culture is our relationship to the water. So the county has completed a boat landing study, we've really pursued better access at Station Creek Boat Landing, Bermuda Bluff, and then also the Whitehall Park. So there's just some examples of how we're working to increase access to water. And a special section of culture is spotlight St. Helena, and as you're very aware, this last year, we've done a lot of work at the, with the cultural protection overlay district community, and you've seen the recommended changes that come forward in that district. That committee is still meeting to evaluate different things that we can do for St. Helena Island to protect and preserve and enhance the culture there. And, you know, some of this is, you know, duplicated, but also we've done the St. Helena Water Shed Study Report, we're also, you know, the water, the monitoring of groundwater, a lot of that is occurring on St. Helena Island as well. So it's looking at both the culture but also the sustainability of the communities on the island, which is, which is very important. Economy, a lot of our activity has been based from the county standpoint on our relationship with the military bases, you know, protecting our existing economic base, and a lot of that in northern Beaufort County has to do with the military bases. So looking both at preventing encroachment, working with them on resilience issues, and then also in attracting new industries. So we've been working on, you know, looking at different sites around the county where we could expand, you know, opportunities for light industrial or attracting industries. Mobility, a lot going on in transportation planning. Actually, there's been a real focus now on corridor plans to set ourselves up for future projects. And so our engineering department is very involved in different plans, you know, reboot roads, we're looking at the Sea Island Parkway Corridor on Ladies Island. In addition, you know, the LATS or the Low Country Council of Governments, they've updated their long-range transport, transportation plan, and we've hired a transportation planner who's Kevin Sullivan, who's working in the engineering department. So all of that, you know, a lot of action being, you know, because of transportation is one of the most visible manifestations of our growth in the county. Funding, as you're aware, there's currently a lot of strategy, you know, we've updated our impact fees and we're, there's discussion about moving forward for a one-cent sales tax referendum. A lot of activity in providing diversity of transportation choices. So we've, we have additions to the Spanish Moss Trail, both extending to Port Royal and then also along Laurel Bay Roads, and then also Palmetto Breeze is actively promoting transit for workforce, you know, they're doing, you know, updates to their study and working with AlcoG on that, and of course, implementing the airport master plans. Housing, I mean, the biggest things going on here would be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was adopted multi-jurisdictionally in Beaufort and Jasper Counties. That is a huge step that we've taken. In addition to that, we're always, you know, looking at our zoning ordinance and making evaluations to make sure that we're overcoming unnecessary regulatory barriers to affordable housing. Community facilities, a lot going on here. This is kind of a recap of what we talked about with the last presentation, but trying to build more resiliently, you know, making sure that what we build in the future and that our current facilities are going to withstand the challenges that we have in this, this environment. Solid waste and recycling, schools and libraries, a lot of activity going on. The school district, as you're aware, has, has had a successful referendum for improvements to their schools, and they're looking at trying to address their capacity issues in southern Beaufort County. We have a new library site that we're working on in the New Riverside area. And, you know, any questions you have, or we can also discuss at our next meeting, but I'm just trying to give you an idea of the scope. Public safety, one of the things going on now is looking at a regional law enforcement center that is better situated in the county to address our, you know, diverse geography. They're looking at a site near Old Field. And then parks and recreation, as you're aware, we've adopted a Parks and Rec master plan, and also there's been quite a bit of activity in expanding our passive parks network. And finally, the built environment, you know, really, our land use plan is something we spend every day implementing through our zoning ordinance, through plan review, but also we've been doing a lot of work regionally, trying to work with our municipalities and other jurisdictions for, you know, regional planning as well. But that gives you just a broad overview, and I realize it's getting late, of the scope of the work that's been done to implement the plan, not just by our department, but by, you know, all county departments.
Comments?
Well done.
Yeah, thanks, Rob.
Yeah, I liked that, you know, really compliment you, a lot of work's been done. I like the summary fashion, but this will definitely pour through this, we've seen this before, and I'm hoping that we can keep the current, at least on an annual basis. And I'm really hopeful that all of our elected officials will see this. Do you plan on presenting this at, to the committees or county council?
Well... We have a council member here.
I think it's very, very useful information, get a feel for what's going on in the county and where we've made progress.
Yeah, to me, it's, it's good news, you know, and it kind of shows, and I realize, you know, you have a plan, you know, the best-laid plans and things change, but, you know, I think we have a good roadmap, and, you know, I think that the fact that we've taken a lot of steps to implement it is...
Better than good. Better than good.
A plan without action is just a dream, right?
Yeah.
Is this being made available on the website for, because there was the lady that spoke this evening, she was, you know, waving around her copy of the comprehensive plan, and a lot of folks out there don't realize the amount of great work that is being done throughout the county, so should this be made available to them?
Yeah, and I think that's something that we're, we're going to be looking into, is how can we kind of provide that information, you know, provide the, kind of an ongoing status. I know that that, when we adopted the plan, that was always the intention, that we were going to make this an active document, and that's why we had that section called the action plan. It's sort of like saying, okay, here's your to-do list, you know, and sort of like, this is the beginning, not the end, as far as adopting the plan.
Great.
I have a quick comment. One thing, we all had a hard year, a lot of it was focused in areas like St. Helena, and thanks for all that work and the CPO committee, and thanks for coming, Kristen and you and so on, continuing to come. I think what I hear from people out there anyway, like let us say, you know, African-American longtime historic landowners, they really want to know, is there, are there needs on the agenda? And that's what this does. This is the way I can say, yeah, it is being considered. I'm not saying, you know, that it's high, medium, or low priority, I'm saying, yes, that issue was heard. And Warsaw, again, is a very good example of that, only because people at Warsaw were like telling you for four years, or Eustis, like, you need to, you know, getting the county by the short hairs and saying, pay attention to us. So that's why I really appreciate this as a volunteer commissioner, you know, sometimes I'll see people at the market, or they'll call me up, or at the gas station, and I can say, it was a great meeting and this is why, or the CPO handled this and this is what we're working on. I think it's super important, and you saw the turnout in 2023. I mean, this room had 120 people in it, you know, on more than one occasion. So the weird thing is that people are interested in planning. I don't know why, because it can be like a snooze fest sometimes, not with us, but in general. I'm just being honest, it's all, it's 8:10, friends.
Keep digging your hole.
I know. But Rob, I really appreciate that, and I think like every, I mean, like my colleagues have said, I mean, I think this is the document that helps us go into the community.
Absolutely.
You know, and just say who we are and what's going on, and as our profile rises, I hope, I hope it does, I hope more people care, then this is a great piece of action info that we can talk about or disseminate. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we have one other piece of business on your chairman's report. As I indicated previously, every two years, we elect new officers to, a chair and a vice chair officer to lead the planning commission. The time to do that is in February, we didn't meet in February, so we're going to do that tonight, and I hope that's no surprise to anybody, but I'm going to ask for nominations, and then we'll take a vote on the nominations. I'm going to start out with, if I might, with vice chair, do we have a nomination for vice chair? Do we have a nomination for vice chair? Oh, come on.
Second.
All right. Do we have a further nomination for vice chair? Hearing none? May I take a motion for approval? All those who approve? You can vote yourself, yes. All right, congratulations, you're on another two-year run. All right, now the vote for chairman? Do we have a nomination for chairman? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, may I have an approval motion, all those who approve the nomination? I think it's unanimous. All right, okay, well, thank you very much for those two appointments or reappointments. Last item, next meeting, put on your calendar, Monday, April 1st, and that's not a joke. All right. With that, unless there's any other business, I'm going to make a motion without, but no objection to adjourn the meeting.